Go ahead and call the meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. McKee here, Lanterman.
Here.
Friedrich?
Present.
Berenkamp?
Here.
Nichols?
Presently here.
Perfect. Alrighty.
Okay, so this is gonna complicate everything.
Join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda approval. Looks like there's a few items, six M, seven A, and twelve A that were added. Anything else from staff?
Uh, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Anything from council? Okay, uh, can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Okay, uh, presentations, I believe we have more of a recognition. Do we have a...
I was just gonna read the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and I don't think I have a copy of that.
I've got it. We're all set.
Perfect. For Public Works.
Yep, so, uh, in recognition of National Public Works Week, which is coming up next week, uh, we have a resolution. Uh, you see the photo there from our cleanup day last Saturday. Uh, teamwork makes the dream work, and we have a great team. So whereas the city of Corcoran finds it important to recognize the work of the city's public works department, and whereas the National Public Works Week is May eighteenth through twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, and whereas as part of National Public Works Week, efforts are recognized within the city's public works department staff and include public works director, operations superintendent, operations manager, operations crew leader, operations maintenance workers, utility superintendent, utility crew leader, developmental superintendent, administrative assistant, and our part-time seasonal workers. And whereas the city recognizes the efforts made enacting the city's vision and goals while providing, responding, collaborating, and improving services to residents of Corcoran, including maintenance of utility and street infrastructure, stormwater systems, parks and amenities, equipment in our fleet, facilities, and dedicated community service. And whereas the city recognizes the public works department in emergency management services, and whereas the city of Corcoran recognizes the time, energy, and dedication provided by our city's public works department, now therefore be resolved by the city of Corcoran, the city council hereby honors our public work staff and recognizes National Public Works Week.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone, Public Works, and who made it out to clean up. That was a good event, yeah.
Another blast.
Yeah.
And it didn't rain.
And it didn't, oh my god, it was the prettiest day we ever had.
Um, and we got...
So we were up by forty. We had a hundred and twenty-one people take advantage of that service that's provided, which was up forty from last year, and, uh, it was, it was a smooth operation.
There was one couple that did either four or five runs. I don't know.
Yep.
They didn't make it back for the fifth?
They did not make it.
Didn't make it back.
That was still a pretty impressive haul they had.
And nothing, nothing odd.
No?
As far as...
Not that couldn't be thrown out, but it was...
It came. Nope. We took care of everything. It's cool. Thank you. And if I may, thank Public Works for that and staff for coming. That was... That was really cool, seeing everybody there, everybody smiling. It was really, really neat, so, very cool.
Teamwork makes the dream work.
It did.
Alrighty. Moving on to open forum. Uh, we have opportunity tonight for anyone who wants to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Jake can walk us through the details. I don't know if we have any comment cards?
Uh, so we have one comment card, so I'd invite anyone who wants to to provide me a comment card. Prior to going up, please walk up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and speak to the dais, to the council. The council will listen to what you have to say. We do not act on it at this time and, uh, limit your comments to five minutes. I have one card, and it's Ms. Francine Woodford.
If you could just give us your name and address when you're up there, for the record, that'd be great.
My name is Francine Woodford. I live at seventeen hundred Maple Hill Road, two three, in Corcoran. I don't know if you guys remember, I was here a few weeks ago asking for help about the rental increase and unreasonableness. Well, I, I found something, and I don't know how to go about it working it. It's, um, it's a council contract with a life period of twenty years. Um, doesn't end until December thirty-first, twenty-third, and I, that says that the, the owners of Maple Hill Estates agree to not do any unreasonable rent increases. And it has the definition of that as defined, um, no more than five percent per year. I don't know, and some of you guys weren't here, um, but basically, the rent increase that they just recently imposed effectively first was a forty-two percent increase of what our current rent was. Um, and I just, I found this information, and I just, I'm so excited I found it, but I don't know what to do with it. So I'm, I'm asking for your help, because I know a lot of people are not able to afford the new increase. And I just think that, I just think that somebody needs to be holding these investors and their, um, their representatives accountable for the, for the stuff that they're doing to the residents who've lived there a long time. I've, I've lived there six years. And I just, I kept digging, and I knew there was something. I'm like, there's gotta be something. So, um, back in two thousand seventeen, the, uh, there was a grant called Manufactured Home Park Preservation Highway Equity Grant Project, right? And I've got a twenty-page agreement here between the Metropolitan Council of Minnesota Housing Finance Agency that, um, outlines everything, the responsibilities of everyone. It also has, in exchange for the grant, the owner of Maple Hill Estates agrees to not make any unreasonable rent increases and maintain affordability. And their affordability definition is defined as thirty percent of the area's median income, which, I, I don't know all the details of how that stuff gets worked out, but I do know that based on this, they should only have been able to raise their rent about twenty-four dollars, and they raised it two hundred. So I don't, like you said, I found this, I just don't know what to do with it. I don't know. I've, I've been in contact with, like, Home Line and whatnot, and they don't even, they're like, that's outside of our area of expertise. So this is the next, this is my next step. I just got this yesterday.
Could you get after, where's, get this to staff, and the staff can make it count?
I can either, I can give them my card and not hold it.
Perfect. And if you could make a copy for council, that'd be great.
I mean, I could give you this copy. I just printed it off. I got it, and I mean, you know.
Staff can make it, so that way we can all get, get our hands on it.
Um, so yeah, it's, the compliance period is a twenty-year compliance period. I requested this data way back when I first came here and asked you guys for help. And I just don't know what to do with this, and I, I know that something can be done. I just don't know how to go about it. So I'm asking for your help. That's my main purpose of coming here, to get some help.
Congratulations on the great find.
I feel like I'm on the whole ground with it, so I just don't know what to do with it now. I found this awesome information, but what do I do? I don't know.
So, so, so next steps for you. Natalie Davis is our community development director. She's going out there. If you wanna meet her in the back, she'll talk with you about next steps.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie.
Is there anyone else for open forum today?
I've received no other cards.
Then we will move on to consent agenda, which consists of items six A through six M. M is the last item that was added, which was the one that was read before, I believe.
Yep.
Uh, does anyone wanna pull anything?
I'd like to pull six F.
Six F, Michelle.
Uh, I don't understand. That's for an agenda item, not an open forum.
Um, anything else? Anyone else? Nope? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A through E and G through M.
So moved. Eric Kim.
Second. Nichols.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Got everyone?
I forgot to say aye, sorry.
Oh, that's what I, I thought I didn't hear your voice, but perfect, five up. Um, Michelle, you pulled seven out.
Perfect. So I just, I guess, um, whoopsie, I feel like this item, because it's an added position, um, should have further council discussion, um, versus being a consent agenda, which is why I pulled it. So, um, in, in reviewing the staff report, I, I can understand and see, um, the reasoning behind it, but I also feel like this wasn't technically a budgeted position. Um, and I can see that it's a budget-neutral position, but I still feel like, because it's not included in this year's budget, we should be proactive and know that we need that role, but put the role into our next budget year and save money versus, um, extending that position then into the next year, because you would have it in this year, and then it continues forward. And I don't know which budget year it's, it's slated for. I didn't have a chance to review the org chart, so thank you for sending that.
So could, should you say that your, your thought was maybe pushing it out?
Yeah, well, I'm just gonna read kind of the thoughts that I wrote down. Um, I feel that it has not been previously approved or reviewed by council in a previous packet, and because it's a new position, I feel that council should, should be able to see that and have a discussion about it versus it being a consent agenda item. Um, I feel that that limits the transparency of that in that budget, and I think it's important for us to just have a discussion about it. Uh, from an, from an operational and a budgetary standpoint, um, I believe it's important to consider staffing equity across all the departments, and I feel like we've been trying to be really proactive in making sure with our common class study that we have the appropriate positions that we need, and we just did an organizational restructure last June, I believe it was. Um, and I just wanna make sure that we remain mindful of how we're allocating our taxpayer dollars, even if it's a budget-neutral role or position, and just have a discussion about it is, is what I really want us to do. Um, I support the police department completely. I support all of our staff as a whole. I just, I guess I'm questioning the immediate need for reintroducing the lieutenant rule when we don't have an open position yet of someone who is going to be retiring. We don't know when that, what that, what that scope might look like. So I feel like the, the staffing that we have right now, for the number of officers that we have, is a good ratio. And I, I would say that if we could consider including this in a future budget, so it isn't just something that we're adding, I would feel better about that from a council member's perspective and just what we are doing with our budget.
Okay. Anyone else? Thoughts on that?
For me, like, like it's written in the, in the, in the thing here and the number of conversations and stuff, it's something that I've, uh, I was hoping to see a kind of a succession plan, opportunities for internal development without going outside the organization and stuff. So it made sense to me, and I, I didn't think anything about pulling it, but appreciate that you did, Michelle. But it just, it is, it is something that I've been saying for a long time. I'd rather, I'd rather hire within, promote within, develop within than to hire an outside, more outside people. And, and I, I'm not excited about losing any more of our officers. I believe, I believe all of them are satisfied with, but just a stepping stone, the development process, the development opportunity internally, so this makes sense to me. So I, that's why I didn't bring it up, so. It's, it's, I, I had no objection if going on, uh, on consent, but you brought, you bring up a good point.
Yeah, it's always fine to pull off consent for discussions.
Yep.
Never a problem with that.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, to me, it makes sense in the climate that we're in, with officers being courted, poached, to avoid loss of a very in-demand function that's been hard for us to acquire and hard for us to keep, especially given that we're in a position of being last in negotiating contracts within our sort of peer group. I feel like it's something that we can do within what we had budgeted to give somebody one less reason to want to move. And we can get, we have a lot of less experienced officers who could benefit from having more one-on-one mentorship time that I think we can create with this kind of a role that we couldn't under the current structure. So I, I totally, you know, admire and respect the idea of, let's try to curb our enthusiasm and do things in the budgeted fashion year to year. But I think that this change is affordable, and it creates more opportunities than risks. So I'm still okay with doing it in mid-year.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could I comment?
Sure.
Could you please bring it up? Uh, so, so first of all, I do, do wanna address the idea of transparency. For those who are in the audience, there is no intention or desire to not be transparent. The fact that it's budget-neutral is part of the reason why they put it on consent. Uh, and operationally for, for everyone's benefit here, what we have going on, our police department does a fantastic job, but, but to the point that was made, we are routinely fighting with other departments to retain our staff. Uh, so, uh, the word poach, I think, is appropriate. Uh, we've lost three officers within the last twenty-four months to other departments, and one of the reasons that they cite is opportunities for advancement. Another reason that they cite is in terms of their professional development, they feel sometimes like they're left alone. And so in order to address those, I, I have had the benefit. Um, I do ride-alongs with all of our police officers, and I do one-on-ones in order to get their perspective of what's happening within the department. And I heard two concerns that are written in the staff report that's up here. One, what is the long-term plan, uh, for our deputy? So our deputy is not retiring right now. Uh, but what really brought it to the forefront for me was I was at the state police chiefs conference here about a month ago, and this, and the police chief from the city of Crystal had an opportunity come up. And so she was not planning on retiring, but she gave them four months' notice in order to seize an opportunity. So that's one great, good opportunity. And then there's also opportunities that are less desirable, health issues, life changes. So one life, one life experience away, you know, for her it was a positive experience, from retiring. So our deputy could retire right now if he wanted to. Uh, he's, he said that he, he's gonna give us some more runway, and we're grateful for that. But what I noticed with Crystal, as I talked with their outgoing police chief, is they had a succession plan. And so their deputy, internal opportunity for growth, their deputy is now stepping up to be their chief. Their lieutenant is stepping up to be their deputy. It provides continuity of service. It provides opportunity for growth within the department. Everybody within that department's super happy about that. That's what got me thinking, and that's when I went to our police chief, and I said, hey, we need to have a model like this. And then I went back to the conversations that I've been having in my ride-along with our police officers. We have fantastic new officers, but some of them don't have as much time on task as, as some others do. And they would benefit from the experience of our sergeants being able to show up on call with them. But because of the administrative demand, our sergeants are sometimes stuck doing admin duties in the department, trying to finish those reports, trying to do those training plans. And so this seemed like a strategic opportunity, and seizing the opportunity to address, keel two birds with one stone. This frees up our sergeants so that they can spend more time with our junior officers on the road. And I heard unanimously from our department, from our patrols, that's a desire they have. As they're being courted by other departments, if we can help them feel more secure here, that they're getting cared for by their seniors, that's advantageous to us in order to retain those officers. And it also helps us develop a succession plan for our deputy. Then we come back to the budget question. How can we afford to do this? We did have an officer retire in February. We went forward to try and recruit for that. Uh, we had candidates come forward. We went through the process, and, um, we want to make sure that we hire the right fit. We had qualified officers that weren't the right fit. And so we have had a vacancy in that position because we chose to not hire the wrong person for our department. As a result, we've had cost savings. With the cost savings from that, as well as from some other areas and patrols, through this year, we can bring someone on board in July, and it's not gonna cost us. We've got that covered. We've got the expense for it covered. To the point for two thousand twenty-six, this would become a two thousand twenty-six budget issue, 'cause it wasn't a projected. I, we had no, no projected need for a lieutenant. This need came out of an awareness of what's happening in the market and what's happening in our department, and trying to respond strategically to the opportunity to make sure that we keep good people and we provide opportunities for them to advance, and right now we can afford it. That, that's the reason why I brought this request forward. And the reason it was on consent was because it wasn't gonna cost us anything at this point.
Thank you. Any other discussion on it? Mark?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I, I appreciate the concerns that were raised by my colleague here, but, uh, with that, uh, I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, agenda item six F as written.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second. Eric Kim.
Any further discussion? Trevor, do you have your hand up?
I was just scratching my head, so.
You don't wanna do that much more.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Post? Alrighty.
I stopped scratching my head before I got to the floor.
On to planning. Uh, so we have a added item, seven A, which is the Domino's mural survey, and this is kind of some data and informational.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is mostly informational, just an update on, uh, the Domino's mural project. Um, a couple of months ago, council directed staff to, um, open a survey to the public to generate some ideas for, uh, for the prompt, for the drawing contest that will be had for the, the Domino's mural. Um, and, uh, that survey wrapped up earlier this week, I believe on Sunday night, and, and we got a total of thirty-three responses, and we feel that we have a pretty strong idea of what the community wants to see on the mural. So, um, we've taken those responses and generated a prompt, and now we're ready to go forward with the drawing contests and, um, just looking for council to direct us to open that contest up, and we can start that on, on Monday.
Cool. Any questions for Trevor?
Real quick question, and I'm sorry, but I, I can't remember. I think we all came up with that participation and such related to that. Just clarity, the, the cooler on the west side, I'm gonna say, of Domino's, is a mural on both sides of that cooler, or is it wrapped around the whole thing?
It would be on, it would be on two sides, um, as the...
Towards the ballpark, towards the highway fifty.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the, the short side, the backside of the, uh, cooler is blocked by the trash enclosure.
Yep. Oh, I just, I, I just, I'm, I'm, the whole thing, it's, looks wonderful. I mean, everything, it's come together. It's great. The lights are on at night. They are not polluting. They are not irritating. It, it is just all coming together, and it'd really be neat to top it off with something like this. So, thank you, Dwight, everybody that's worked on this very, very much. It's, it's a cool thing, so. If nobody has any other comments, I'd, I'd make a motion to direct staff to make this happen.
Make a second.
How's that?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. On to seven B, uh, which is the continuation of the QuickTrip discussions. Um, and Jay, did we have a card?
Uh, so we have two comment cards, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the first, uh, person up would be Mr. James Rash, if I'm present. Uh, can I have the record?
Go ahead with the public comment opportunities. Got a few. Give us your name and address for the record. That'd be great.
Good evening. Uh, my name is James Rash, and my address is nineteen-one-one-eight ninety-nine place. I live here in the Bellwether, uh, community. First of all, Mr. Mayor and the council members, thank you so much for allowing me the time to speak to you. I am not a gifted speaker, so please bear with me. I come humbly before you, evident concern citizen, and I think I represent the members of Bellwether as well as, I believe, speaking on behalf of the community of, uh, Maple Grove across the street from the proposed site. I've listed, um, about seven items, and I prepared some additional prints of what I'm gonna copy on the committee who's interested in a copy of it. Does anyone in the council want one?
Sure.
Sure. If you have enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I can share one. I can share one.
Hopefully you got it.
You may.
I got one. Thank you.
Just real quick to Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
If I may, folks, I'd really like it if you could listen to the person talking. Sidebar conversations and stuff are very distracting.
It gets tricky up here.
I, I would wanna be able to hear everything, and I want you to be able to hear everything also. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for that, Dean. My first concern is, uh, one of ground and water pollution. The lawn irrigation for the Bellwether and several other nearby communities comes from holding ponds that could be affected by runoff of gas spillage and car wash chemicals. If contamination is sufficiently high, all irrigated lawns could be killed off. Hot water contamination would likely impact water quality for twelfth water treatment plants, uh, both located, located nearby. My question is, why should we challenge Mother Nature? Air pollution and health issues. Exposure to benzene is a serious health issue. I don't know how many people are actually aware of that, but benzene is a significant hazardous component in gasoline. Light pollution, uh, is a big word that I didn't understand, but basically it means, uh, light shining on neighborhoods in evening hours. After some set lighting of commercial property is or should be prohibited in residential areas. That's, that's my opinion, but it's shared by many residential owners. Um, I'm asking that you be pleased respectful of Corcoran and Maple Grove residents. A second poor choice I would have would be that hours of operation be restricted to minimize that. The annoying concern also is that, um, of traffic safety. QuickTrip is a major traffic generator. This would increase vehicular traffic and will cause, in my opinion and the opinion of records, additional, additional accidents and injury to passengers and pedestrians. I didn't know this fact when I did a little research, but fire and explosion danger is, is a hazard for any gas station. And according to a twenty-twenty National Fire Protection, they have a typo there, I apologize for it. Twenty-twenty National Fire Protection Association report, from twenty-fourteen to twenty-eighteen, local fire departments responded to an estimated average of four thousand one hundred and fifty fires in or on service gas station property per year. These fires caused an average of three civilian deaths, forty-three civilian fire injuries, and thirty million dollars in direct annual property damage. That's a statistic on record. It's not mine. Third point I wish to make is that crime and safety will become a concern. Convenience store holdups account for six percent of all robberies in the nation. Convenience store employees suffer from high rates of workplace homicide, second only to taxi cab drivers. Pause, 'cause I think that's staggering. Next point I think is relatively terribly important. Another gas station simply is not necessary. We're overwhelmed already with gas stations in the immediate vicinity area. Gas use is decreasing in the meantime, projected to drop by greater than thirty-five percent over the next five years. Why are we overbuilding the gas stations when the decline is...
One second, sir. If I could make a motion to extend, uh, gentlemen's time by another couple of minutes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reasons for the declining gas are listed in there, obvious. More efficient gas engines increase use of gas vehicles, increase use of electrical vehicles. As I stated earlier, there's sufficiently, or maybe too many, operating gas stations already in the nearby area. QuickTrip itself has a third one proposed, uh... QuickTrip itself has a third one proposed, there's a second one under construction at Dayton Parkway, I ninety-four in Dayton Parkway, and there's one already at Dayton, I believe at nineteen-zero-one-nine, Highway eighty-one. Plus, there's a marathon station just a few miles southwest of here. It seems to me that any other type of retail business makes more sense. My wife and I moved here from Madison, Wisconsin, we're infinitely familiar with QuickTrip. They're running a good business, I wish they didn't pump gas. I wish that they didn't have extended hours, I wish them good will, good will, but I wish they would go anywhere except on that small lot where they're proposing put on a gas station. I thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council members for listening to me, I talk passionately from the heart, and I just hope that serious consideration is given. If I'm understanding correctly, a previous review of this, three to four voters seemed interested in passing it, but then spoke against it, and then decided in a vote to pass it to, for further consideration. I don't understand that, and I don't understand the need for the QuickTrip at this location. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have another?
One other, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Stephanie St. Clair.
Okay, come on.
Hello, council members and Mr. Mayor, I'm Stephanie St. Clair, ninety-seven forty-five, El Dorado Lane North, Maple Grove, and I am one of the neighbors that was notified about the building because we will be affected by it. And on our April twenty-fourth meeting that you had, there was a petition with a hundred and twenty-five neighbors from Delgany Neighborhood that was submitted into your packet opposing the QuickTrip, but it wasn't mentioned at your meeting, April twenty-fourth, so I'm here to reiterate a little bit about what that was. Of the one hundred and twenty-five neighbors, we have been in our homes and have had County Road one oh one get busier and busier over the years. With the traffic on one oh one and another entrance, if QuickTrip were to build, we would have more susceptibility to traffic accidents, and it, it, the congestion, and it's just not safe. Another thing is, our property values will decrease, nobody likes that. I know that QuickTrip mentioned that what they proposed or projected was seven hundred vehicles a day at that location. We can't handle seven hundred cars going in and out, and those would be more like six AM till nine PM maybe, but that is still, if you go down one oh one anytime during the day, you will see that that is just not right. The other thing was, it was mentioned that QuickTrip was put on hold because of COVID for that location, but in the meantime, in twenty-twenty-three, just two-point-five miles away, because I measured it, is the QuickTrip that's on County Road eighty-one. And just two miles away from the sign from that QuickTrip that's on Dayton Road to your QuickTrip proposed area, on the ninety-seven hundred block of County Road one oh one, it's just two miles, so we have two QuickTrips already within two and a half miles. So my proposal is, please deny this building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
No other cards, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, then we will go ahead and close up the public comment portion, and go on to council discussion or staff presentation.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't have a very long staff presentation, I'll just reiterate that this is a continuation of the discussion we had just a couple of weeks ago. Staff did provide revised resolutions in the packet, and then there were a few small clarifications made in resolutions that are now on the dais, where the changes are underlined. So I would say we want to be working off what is on the dais tonight, rather than what is on the packet. Everything except the variance resolution had changes. And then also prepared, because we have to make a decision tonight, May fourteenth is the review deadline, so we do need a final decision, with that in mind, staff did prepare a denial resolution, also had some slight changes, so again, we want to be working off of what is on the dais. And then regardless, so the staff recommendation, the planning commission's recommendation was to recommend approval of the project, regardless of whether the CUP and site plan get approved, the preliminary plat should be approved tonight, it does meet all the standards, and there is a condition in the preliminary plat resolution that the one issue of the building setback, either a variance must be granted and approved, or they would have to provide a plan that shows the building complying with setbacks. So they'd be able to make a decision from there, but we should approve the preliminary plat even if you deny the rest of the project.
Which is twenty-twenty-five, twenty-four?
Correct, yes, so I'm available for questions, the Amama G's and QuickTrip team is here, and we will go in there.
Okay, any questions for Natalie, or not, for the applicant?
Oh, I'm sorry, there was one clarification I wanted to make, at the last meeting, I said the variance setback for the building would be nineteen-point-eight feet, that is incorrect with the changes that would be required if this were to move forward, the variance would actually allow for a twenty-nine-point-eight foot setback from the county road. The plans right now show nineteen-point-eight feet, but the plans would need to be revised to show a fifty-five foot right of way instead of sixty-five feet with a ten-foot trail easement, so that's, it gives them an additional ten feet from potentially any pavements, so that was one clarification.
Thank you. Any questions for Natalie? See if the cogs turn, if anything popped up, if not, anything for the applicant?
There he is, I got nothing.
Nothing? Council discussion?
I'm, I'm one that had asked a tremendous number of questions and such, and my, my, my questions were satisfied and such. To the neighbors and, and the folks that are wondering why, why the votes and stuff, and why I did what I did, this is a permitted use in commercial property, if I'm correct.
C two.
C two, excuse me, commercial two. So it's, it's one of those things, to say no to it, it creates all kinds of issues, folks. Everything that can happen in the properties to the south of Bellwether and to the east of Bellwether. This is what this has been planned for thirty years, forty years, the comp plan is something that the cities have to do, it has not changed a lot and such, and I've been told that everybody that purchased Bellwether property and everybody in that general vicinity was part of the purchase agreement and understood what the comp plans were, okay? I, I was respectful for all y'all, it was in the packets that, at closing, those kind of things, and I've asked, I've asked to see it, and I've seen the closing packets and stuff, so it, in my mind, it shouldn't be a surprise, and I've used this example numerous times, if you build next to a golf course, your house is going to get hit by a golf ball. This is something obviously very different, but it is not going to be staying as a plowed field or anything, it is part of the comp plan of this city, previous council members, mayors, residents have done this comp plan and such, so that's where I'm going with this stuff. I would love to be able to tell somebody if you don't want it to change, and I've done this in the past, buy it, and we'll find a farmer to tell farming and stuff, but I don't think anybody can afford it, folks. That, that, that landowner has the right, this is part of that comp plan and those kind of things, so apologize for anything, anybody that's been misled or anything else, but I, I, I was part of putting Delgany in when I lived in Maple Grove, folks. I've been through this, all of the neighbors around Delgany, all farmlands, all residents with, with ten acres or more, didn't want Delgany to go in. I was part of Maple Grove when it was thirty-four thousand people, I left Maple Grove when it was sixty-one thousand people, and I got active shortly after I got in, and understood the processes and all of those things, and it, that happened. It is very hard for cities to say, nope, we're not doing it, when a lot of our regulations and a lot of our direction comes from the Met Council, okay? The Met Council tells us, we have to have a plan, we have a plan, we have it all the way up to twenty-forty, the next plan is in process to be talked about starting next year for the twenty-fifty plan. So it is one of those things that happens, and yes, people don't appreciate, don't like, don't think it makes sense and such. We've spent a tremendous amount of time talking about many properties and such, even, even Bellwether and Amberly and all of those things, boy, by golly, none of those people that live on the five, ten acres around them wanted this to happen, but again, the farmer had a right to sell, they sold, everything was set up in, in Bellwether the way it is with tremendous opposition, but it was one of those things that it was followed, the process was followed and such, so that's where I'm at, and I'm, I'd love to hear whatever else is saying, thinking up here, please.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll go next.
Okay.
I'll give the opposite view.
You always do.
I, I often do.
What are you, what are you drinking tonight, anything plus?
Not, not really, no. So I'll start by saying that a motor fuel station is not a permitted use, it's a conditional use, in all the districts where it appears in our zoning code. And a conditional use requires council to assess separate characteristics and criteria beyond what would be the case if there was a permitted use applied. So if this were a bank application, or a bakery application, or a restaurant, or a grocery store, those are true permitted uses, as long as they meet code, there's no room for us to disagree with approval. For a conditional use, we have to assess separate characteristics, and it is entirely possible that if council decides that it doesn't meet those criteria, the next thing that comes in would also be opposed by the residents and neighbors. If this was an Aldi, if this was a, pick a chain that people don't appreciate having close to them. There, there are limited realms of discretion that we have available to us, motor fuel stations is one where we have to assess those criteria. At our last meeting, we had a lot of residents and emails and in person express concerns about noise pollution, hours of operation, crime and safety, so we considered all of those things, and we said, well, we're concerned about those things too, we'd like to table this for a meeting to give the applicant a chance to address some of those concerns. Parking was another really big one that kind of got set to the side in terms of, not necessarily the QuickTrip's parking, but what is the implication on the surrounding area if area that is currently used for parking and existing businesses no longer available for that business? And those things have been put into a draft resolution for denial, so council needs to weigh, does it make more sense for us to approve this application, because, you know, can we get to a point where it makes sense to accept the trade-offs that this would represent for the city? Or does it make more sense to deny, knowing that the next thing that comes in, we may have less discretion on, and, and may like less than we would like this? And so I'll, I'll set the table for the rest of the council with that, we have the absolute authority to say no based on findings of facts that are entirely reasonable, and staff has put those together for us. We have to decide if we, as a body, concur with that interpretation, or if we want to approve instead. But it's, this is a subjective call for council to make in its role in this process, it's not a must.
And I will just add that in the resolutions, there's a lot of the added conditions that you were talking about to try to get to, to a potential place that we were comfortable with are included there, I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read through to make sure.
I wanted to confirm, I did see the draft approval resolution included limitations on hours of operation for the car wash, but I, I didn't notice limitations on the core, like gas pump functionality in the convenience store part, is that there as well?
Go, please.
There were, you know, limitations, there was not a direction from council to limit, unless I missed it, I didn't, I thought the limitation was just for the car wash.
We, we asked, we, nobody asked for it as part of a resolution, we asked if it was an option, but-
Okay, so I, I misremembered it then, I thought the mayor made a motion, but if it was just for the car wash, then-
Just for the car wash.
I see a, I remember the applicant said there are QuickTrips that do have limitations based on city requirements, and I think in light of the residential character of the neighborhood, it would make sense to limit in the same way here. That might also help to deal with some of the public safety concerns about, you know, robberies and safety of the people working at the location.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I believe the QuickTrips in the area that aren't twenty-four hours, they typically, I believe it's, and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it is six AM to eleven PM, if council wanted to make directions to that that could be added, but we might want to just verify that with QuickTrip themselves.
Yeah, it's probably variable, I'm sure there is community, like, that they are-
Okay, I think that's what I generally saw when I took a look at that, was six AM until eleven PM.
Are there other convenience stores in town?
There is Corcoran Crossroads.
Is he in the B-two zone?
If you can come up to the microphone, Dean, please.
It is in a C-one zone.
So it's a C-one zone?
Well, it's, yeah, it's, it's similar, and that's, it's also a conditional use in the C-one, so C-one's just supposed to be a little bit more neighborhood, whereas C-two is meant to serve more motorists, kind of a slightly larger region than the neighborhood's scale of commercial.
All right.
But, yeah, so it's, I would say they're fairly similar, the standards are fairly similar for a gas station, and I do believe Crossroads does close the indoor operations, you can still use pumps after the hour, so.
That's in his CUP, or that's his decision?
I don't know.
It's his decision.
So if it's not mainly not him, I would not expect it to be placed on to us?
I would say council does have authority to limit the hours of operation if desired.
I don't think it would be a reason. Do you have anything else you picked up? Anything from council, any questions for the applicant, or?
There were conditions in the site plan for showing acceptable parking for Mama G's, assuming that we had approved. What would the enforcement mechanism be, like, if, if they came through and didn't have that, what would be the next step, what would occur?
If they didn't have, I'm sorry, I missed what you said.
If they weren't able to find the required number of parking spaces and weren't willing to make the other changes that would be required in that-
They would have to come back with a variance or a site plan amendment further, we would have to basically bring it back to council if they, if there was no way for them to meet the parking, the other option is they would need to reduce volleyball courts in the recreational space to be able to provide the requisite parking for their use, so there's a couple of different ways of going about it.
Give them options to-
Yeah.
But if they didn't do that, what does that do to QuickTrip?
So if they don't do their part, and I don't have a compliant plan, then QuickTrip can't move ahead. I need a compliant plan.
So those are linked together in that way, then?
Yes.
Do you have something else on that, or just clarification?
I'm processing.
Fair enough.
I'll make a motion to amend the approval resolution to add-
Which one?
If it's for the hours of operation, it's twenty-five, twenty-five.
Edit twenty-five, twenty-five to include hours of operation of six AM to ten PM.
For clarifying question?
For the convenience store.
Not the pumps?
Not the pumps. So it's an even playing field?
I just want a point of clarification, because the convenience store, is it, can we limit the convenience store? I just want a point of clarification because the convenience store, is the convenience store, can we limit the convenience store?
Yes.
Okay.
So Jeremy, can you restate that again? Sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to amend that resolution to include an hours of operation limitation of six AM to ten PM on the convenience store.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, further discussion, no. Was there limitations related to the car wash also?
That's already, that's already answered.
Where was it? I, that's what I'm asking.
Point, point one five.
I wish I could read five hundred and forty pages and then two hundred, there it is. Okay. That was my question. I scanned too quickly.
Um, did we talk about lighting? Yes, so the lighting, uh, we have talked about, the lighting plan complies with our candle or, and they, there is a limit, okay, I'm sorry. They have to be one lumen at the property line. And they do have a plan that complies. There is a condition in here that also says the fuel canopy lights must be dimmed so that that is being met. And that is something that we can measure. I think we'd have to potentially buy a tool to do that, but that is something that can be objectively measured by staff if there was concerns. Additionally, the screening that we're adding to the site as a condition would also help with some of the light.
I'd say if we want to discuss that or another topic further, we can do that after. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Mayor, I'd like to hear briefly. Um, with the motion on table being to just amend the draft resolution, you want to understand it, uh, to add the hours of operation. It would be appropriate just to make sure that, out of the interest of creating a robust record on this, that we are memorializing the reasons for, for those hours and, and under, you know, which provisions of the CUP were, were applied.
Okay.
I think it's, it's rooted in public safety and the concerns around potential for creation of crime opportunities. And that would be public safety, health, morals and comfort would be the link.
Okay, is that sufficient, John?
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
And that was two.
Two, three, I believe.
I said aye.
You said aye? Okay, so that passes. That be added to the resolution. That passes three to two. McKee, Baron Camp, nay. Any other? And I think that's, we've added quite a bit. To try to mitigate the impact. Want to make a motion? If there's any other questions, feel free to come up. If someone wants to make a motion, um, for approval or potentially denial, um, feel free to do so. I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-four, approving the preliminary plan, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six, approving the CUP. And, uh, this may be a little bit outdated, twenty twenty-five, forty-three, approving the site plan for QuickTrip Mama G's. I believe the variances were included in twenty-six.
Um, correct. I think you, um, so the resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-five is the CUP. I think you said twenty-six. And then resolution, resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-six is the variances, which approves two, denies one, which is the, regarding the utility connection for Mama G. And then, um, and then correct, twenty twenty-five, forty-three is the site plan and site plan amendment.
Okay, so making my numbers match with what Natalie said, because those are correct. That would be my motion. Do I have a second?
I second that, yes.
Second Baron Camp. Any further discussion?
I have a discussion question, maybe a series of questions. So I asked previously, what happens if we don't get a compliant plan for actually issuing permits and so on? What if we get a compliant plan, but it's not followed? What happens then?
And I, and I heard that concern and that's part of the edits that you see today. Just to clarify, I think we technically already have this authority, but we just clarified for the sake of no confusion later on. So for the site plan. Page twenty-three, we, I'm sorry, page six, I added paragraph twenty-three, which says, further, the following conditions must be met prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for QuickTrip. Mama G's must restore the area between the building and the right-of-way along County Road one oh one and any other areas that were previously used for parking, drive aisles or driveways, typo, I'll fix that, that are no longer used to be used for parking to a vegetated state per their landscaping plan. Paragraph B says Mama G's must install all required parking and/or related site improvements in compliance with their site plan amendment. Now, what happens if they don't follow through? We've also required that QuickTrip obtain a right-of-entry agreement, which basically allows if Mama G's doesn't perform QuickTrip as the party to the development contract and the party that would provide us with the financial security, they can theoretically perform this work. If they don't do it, the city will ultimately be able to pull on the letter of credit and complete this work.
Then it's your pleasure?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? We have the motion and a second.
I think someone.
We can't, um, really take public, uh.
There's a question on the line of credit.
Owing of the line of credit.
The letter of credit would be a part of the development contract and that would be QuickTrip since they are the applicant and the developer.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Michelle?
Aye.
Okay, so four oh one, um, equals with the extension. That is approved with the condition. All right. And with that, we can give, if anyone is wanting to leave, we certainly might have added, if you want to stay, you're more than welcome to. So we head on to item, uh, eight A, which is unfinished business? Do I have that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, this is the Chisholm Trail hearing and street improvements.
Gotcha. Thanks very much.
You can wait just for a minute.
Yep, I will.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thanks.
Would you like us staff to do a quick project presentation and then open the public hearing?
That'd be great.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Uh, I just have a few quick slides to go through here. We'll kind of go through the location of where this work would be done, the anticipated improvements, the assessments, and then the funding sources and project cost. Next slide, please. So Chisholm Trail identified here and then the red, uh, line kind of outlines the properties that would be affected by this work. Next slide, please. A feasibility study was done, uh, back in April and the anticipated improvements identified in the feasibility study were a full-depth reclamation, which is grinding up the existing pavement, using that with underlying gravel and making a new base for the road and then placing new pavement, um, on top of that new base. There would be drain tile installed as well to help drain the new roadway, um, and kind of keep the longevity of that roadway in place. And then spot drainage improvements throughout the area that have been identified in that feasibility study. Next slide, please. The assessments for this were identified, uh, as a rehabilitation and that is shown here in the table of nine thousand dollars. But per the assessment policy, there, um, there has historically been a eligible free overlay for certain areas, um, within the city. And that has been identified as forty-five hundred dollars. So if you take the nine thousand and subtract the credit of forty-five hundred dollars, the assessment per property would be forty-five hundred dollars. The, uh, the assessments are also, there is a term that those assessments can be paid over. Staff recommends utilizing the last bond, uh, that's kind of identified there on the last bullet. It's one percent of the current bond market interest rate, so three point four one percent. One percent above that would be four point four one percent of the interest rate. And then we would recommend a term of ten years to pay that back. Next slide, please. The funding sources here have been identified. The estimated total project cost would be the forty-one. Local funds would be the three hundred forty thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty cents. And then the assessments would cover eighty-one thousand dollars. And then I just identified the different, uh, general, the different budget, either budget pools that those would come from. So the twenty twenty-five general budget would be two hundred fifty thousand dollars for the asphalt maintenance line item. And then the pavement management fund would cover ninety thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars and sixty cents. Next slide, please. That is really all I have, um, because this is an improvement hearing. I believe we have the opportunity to hear from residents and then we'd be looking for a decision from council on how to proceed.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. And so if anyone would like to come up, um, and speak, now is your time. Sure, come on up. I'll set up.
Uh, Hell's Voltery, ninety-eight, twenty, Chisholm Trail. In the last meeting, which I attended via Teams, Zoom Teams, that, um, we were to be given a choice and a vote on how, what we wanted to have happen here. Am I clear here that, that it's gone from a, uh, what would have been a free overlay to now a full road replacement and with assessments that are assigned to it? Is it, is that the direction that they're going or, or do we still have an opportunity to, to sway this in some way?
What we typically do, we have questions, we'll have staff kind of make some notes and then, uh, ma- make sure we get everything and then we try to address your questions at the end of, of the public comment period.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, just the, for formality, if you could just take a vote on opening the public hearing formally for this matter, um, just.
A vote on opening?
Just for the record, yep.
Okay.
And then, uh, and then we'll, we'll be the same at close.
I move to open the public hearing.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, and, um, do we have?
You gotta say it again?
We can, we can, we can hear the gentleman's comments as a part of the public record. That's certainly fine. I just.
Insert it there.
In case anybody was waiting for a cue.
Perfect. And then if there's no one else, I will make a motion to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, staff, do we have any answer to, to kind of the specifics of, of the project?
Yeah, I think we did host a neighborhood meeting. I know it was January, so we talked about different types of projects, right? So if it's an overlay project, there essentially wouldn't be an assessment. We would, we would use the, the free overlay would become an overlay project. We talked about that meeting that, uh, based on the site conditions and some of the, the characteristics of the pavement, we had some concerns and hesitation to just go, go basically put another two inches on top of that pavement because with the cracks that you have, it'll propagate up and we'll lose some value there. But we didn't know until we went through a feasibility report, but if it did go beyond an overlay, that there was a potential assessment that would need to be considered. And then the third thing that we evaluated in the feasibility was to, you know, basically rebuild the full section. So there was kind of three different projects that were outlined and there was different thresholds and that. We did, you know, have the conversation about there would be future times to speak on the project, uh, which tonight is, is the first formal time. And what tonight does is really caps the assessment. So tonight's decision, if the council were to move forward, would be like this assessment is capped at forty-five hundred. That would be the max assessment we could do, uh, as we move through the project. In theory, there would be, or there would be another opportunity to speak at the assessment hearing, but in theory, we could lower the assessments if there was some justification. If, that would be totally council's opinion on, you know, choice on that matter. But, you know, tonight's just capping that, kind of setting expectations. The next step would be to design the project, bid it, get real information and then decide whether to move forward with the assessments and/or the project. So there's, the word, kind of the vote is like of your opinion on do you support an assessment to do a larger project? I think with staff's intention, to your question of do we have a choice, tonight is to say, do I support getting assessed for a project? And in staff's opinion, this project would provide more value to the city long-term. The soils had modeled soils, which really indicated high levels of groundwater. And so adding the drain tiles, so just putting pavement over it will, you know, make a, a more strategic investment. So, um, the outcomes of feasibility, you know, show that we get the most value, uh, by doing a full depth, depth reclamation. But that, you know, per our assessment policy means we, 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 we should consider assessments based on the assessment policy. But again, tonight is your chance to say, do I like this product or not, or your first step to do that for council to listen. Does that answer your question?
Can I ask an additional question?
Briefly, sure.
Okay. Briefly? So, so today I noticed they were marking all utilities. So does that mean this project is going forward regardless of what?
No, there's several steps that would have to go, has to come back to us several times for different approvals.
Yeah, we haven't even designed the project, so I'm not sure who, I mean, we could have had a drain tile repair. I'm not sure who called that in. We'd have to check. It could even been a private person that marked the utilities, but.
They did every post in the neighborhood.
Okay, yeah, I don't know. We're, we haven't been authorized to go. I'd have to follow up with the team. I'm not aware of that. Tonight's the night where we approve the product to design, so we can follow up on that. I'm not aware of that, but.
Yeah, they were roaming around today.
Yep, Mayor, if I need.
I did talk to one of the fellows who, he came to my yard.
If you can come up to the microphone, please.
We don't bite, it's okay.
We respect your input an awful lot. Appreciate it.
I'm going to tell you what, um, my address is ninety-eight, ten, Chisholm Trail. When the fellow came out today, uh, he came to my yard and asked me, what are you doing? And he said that, um, they are going to be putting them in the road and we just assigned to come out and identify where the power was. So he did say that it would be putting in a, a new road, so.
Thank you.
By the road with all the roads.
Yeah, actually, can you, to my yard?
I, I can follow up on that. Um, the project is not moving forward. I honestly, I'm not going to be able to answer it tonight.
We wouldn't have plans to, to go off of to do that, so I'm, that's.
You haven't designed it yet, so it'd be really premature. So I, I can certainly follow up on that, but that there is, the project, in the scope is to actually, you know, if they move forward, is to start that design, so. If they prema- if they prematurely, which is a hypothetical, you know, we'll address that and it would have just been a, what they're describing is a go-for-one locate, so you'd call a locate.
It was about, it was about, it was about six trucks down there.
Yeah, because, so when you call in a locate, all the small utility providers have to go out and measure it. So like if you were a resident, you go, I want to plant a tree, based on the description, they have to mark it. So it could have been an email that triggered that, you know, so if that happened, we'll address it, but it, you know, that, the project hasn't been approved. If that was premature, we'll address it, but, um, tonight is where we move forward, so.
And I have to say, I, I, I have absolutely nothing to hide on my property, but I wish they would have told me that it was going to be coming out to do this. So, you know, I have a, I have a German shepherd that's with me all the time. They came walking around the corner. I didn't know if somebody was going to be on my property. And, and what happened if that dog defended me? I'm going to be sued by the locator. So I appreciate it if it's going to move forward like that in the future, that somebody contacts us and lets us know when they plan to be in the neighborhood.
Yeah, and there would be additional notice.
Yes, that, yes, so again, we can't control a small utility provider locate because that's who went on your property. But if, it sounds like that potentially we have to follow up on something, but yes, the intent is to communicate. And that would have been a premature call-in if that's the case, so we'll look into that. But yes, the intent is to communicate and that would have been a premature call-in if that's the case, so we'll look into that. I, you know, I don't think resources may spend another than an hour to submit that, and we'll make sure that we pay for that if that was the case. But I don't want to presume, I mean, I trust the data here, it sounds like it was associated with the project at that scale and we'll have to address it, so I apologize for that. But again, we have no control over the locator, so we can note, tell you they're coming, but I can't stop the locator, it's a private company that does that, but, you know, I guess I apologize. But it's good to have that data, because we need to know, your eyes on the ground a lot of times, so please let Laura know if you have any more questions. That's what we're here for, so please use that contact information.
And to go back to the question that you had, you said you'd have multiple opportunities to come and talk about it. This is the first and there will be multiple other opportunities as it goes through the process, this is just the first hearing, the first step.
And technically, the public hearing is closed, but if you have one.
Hi, my name's Randy, I got nine-nine-four-seven Chisholm Trail, way down in the end of the call this day. I was under the same impression as Hal, was that there wasn't really any decisions made that we would get an opportunity to vote in a way on this. When they went from gravel to pavement, that was the case. In fact, the whole neighborhood had to, to decide whether did they want us to try to re-gravel it or, or put pavement in at this cost. It seemed like it's a totally different deal here. And by the way, I've, I've been there for forty-one years. The group that came out today and marked everything again was a group called Spot On, the guys that do that. But I talked, I went and talked to the guy and I said, what's going on? Are you getting this ready for some type, the road work and stuff? He said, yeah, I guess they're gonna do some, some drilling boring. And I'm going like, I believe they already did that, but, because I was there. So there's, there's a lot of confusion about what's going on in the whole operation. One, us being informed, and then the other one, why are you having somebody come out and pay for, for that again? It's obviously a pavement that you gotta make sure these guys do that, and it's, and the work's already been done. They drilled holes all the way up and down the street to test what was underneath the pavement and the aggregate to supposedly help them make this decision. So I'm, I'm just not confident in what's going on with that all.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, I think just for framing purposes, just to be clear, so this is the improvement hearing, right? Councils make a decision about whether or not the project should go forward. I would direct the council's attention to primary to point one of the resolution, which talks about whether the project is necessary, cost-effective and feasible. You have a feasibility report that was in your packet, you've heard from city engineer and staff about it. And the determination and the reason for the public hearing is to take that input on whether to go forward with the project. There would be a hearing later on on the amount of assessments, as Kevin mentioned, they can go down but not up.
Yep.
But this is the hearing to decide whether the project should go forward.
And that would be when we have a, if this first one was approved, this first decision point, when we have a design and a budget for it, so.
Right, so seeing that.
If it's way under budget, oh, that makes sense, if it's way five times over what we thought, then okay, we've got.
Right, and so part, so part of the reason that the assessments become an issue is because it's part of the, that the project is funded. So you determine that and helping to determine the feasibility for it, and this is authorizing that next step of the preparation of the plans and the report.
Makes sense, thank you.
Any questions for Kevin or staff in general?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I can, again, Kevin, you'd have no idea what's going on with locators, borings, whatever, and I. I completely believe our residents and stuff, so if, if there's something amiss, you'll be able to let them know.
Yes, I can follow up, I'll be able to figure this out tomorrow if we can send a message out.
My question's before that came up, and again, thank you all for asking. Chisholm Trail was put in, when was it tarred? How's that for a good question? I'm asking him, not, not, not the public.
Forty years ago, I can, I can send that out to.
Forty? Really?
I don't know how long, you know.
It was paved?
Yeah, was it sooner than that?
It was almost thirty years ago.
Okay.
Okay, I can get the date.
Nope, that's okay, I don't, I don't need sidebars or anything, folks, thirty years, my next question goes with that. Why so long to determine the free overlay? I thought that's supposed to be done relatively soon after that. Fortunate that it hasn't been done, but something, again, folks, I'm having a conversation, we've listened, I'm trying to get someplace that supports what we're trying to do and ask questions for you guys, so, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but.
No, no problem.
Why such a delay on that overlay, just whatever, and then why? Why, what is the, I haven't driven down Chisholm for probably three months, it's close to me and such, but I haven't driven down that road because there hasn't been anything going on. Is there, is it deteriorating, is there frost heaves, is there all kinds of problems, what, what's happening, Kevin?
So I'll try to, your first one has to be a little bit longer answered.
Yeah, I know I was rattling fast.
Yep, so the frankest, bluntest answer is we don't have a CIP that addresses road maintenance in the city.
Thank you.
We never, I've been here eight years, we still don't really have one today. When I started, it was, we put seventy-five thousand dollars to a road in Corcoran, and we have seventy miles and we're gaining two miles a year. We have, we have never addressed that issue, so it's really due to lack of investment over forty years, fifty years. There's some roads that have held up better and some that have held up worse, and it's really due to the type of soils, right? This neighborhood, at this point with the high water, you know, water is the road's enemy, so if you're in areas with high water, your road's not gonna last as long. And forty years ago, they just graded the road and plowed, you know, paved it up, right? They didn't really take account for that. However, sometimes it was due to development, sometimes it was city, but it can't really go back forty years and change that, so.
Yep.
When the council, this is before my time, so post-ten years, the council was looking at doing, it's a long historical conversation of how do you pay for paving roads? How do you pay for fixing roads? And so in our formal assessment policy, there is a section that clearly says these roads have never received a maintenance project. A significant one other than this, you know, when you talk maintenance projects, there's crack filling, there's seal codes, those are, you know, there's the recclimate that we do, those are kind of lower level maintenance projects. The first kind of more significant one that we consider assessments on is an overlay. So that's kind of where you cross the threshold of assessment policy. So, so we have this working list in our formally adopted policy, we didn't include it here, we included it in, I think, the January, February meetings, so we can resend that back out. But there's a, there's a paragraph that lists every road in Corcoran that never got an overlay. And so our approach without a CIP is we, we, we drive around, work off of that list. We've been increasing the budget, so we're up to two hundred fifty thousand that we put towards, you know, trying to address these overlays. And we, every year, drive around with staff and we try to put, you know, get to the worst streets worst or decide where we can put that best value play. So that's really the program that we have, it's pretty informal, but that's where we are as a community.
So like, like to Corcoran Trail was two years ago?
I think it's three years ago now, Corcoran Trail was identified, they were a free overlay, that was a horseshoe that had, the two ends, I believe, had, no, the inside was paved.
Half was paved.
The half part of the horseshoe was paved, the two outsides were gravel. We did a similar project, we're mimicking that here. Atlas of Woods was half paved and whatnot over in, you know, by North. So we had some awkward things, those were previous identifiers needing to be addressed more. So this Chisholm Trail is one of the, you know, one of the, it's next up in the line, and we're, we're probably three, four years away from ending that.
Is it beat up pretty bad?
It's, I mean, it's passable, but it needs a maintenance treatment, right?
Yeah, I understand.
And then the biggest difference between this is the type of cracking. So because of the modeled soils, because of the high groundwater, the cracking's different, so. It's an engineering assessment on best value, but we can put an overlay on this road. Typically, we hope to get, you know, fifteen years out of an overlay. I, I don't think we'd get fifteen years out of an overlay on this road based on the existing conditions.
And usually, usually cities' roads are maintained every twenty years.
So fifty, I, I'm coming from a city that had a pretty robust, I came from Shakopee, had a very robust pavement plan. You're typically doing seal coat, a lot of other lower level.
Yeah.
About the fifteen-year mark is when you, when you do what, what we're talking about, so the free overlay. And then now, so we're at the thirty-year mark, so one of the things that I do want to say is the cost that it would have for a free overlay, that's being factored in to the assessed cost. And so you're not missing out on the benefit of a free overlay. I, I just want to emphasize that, because we recognize because of our maintenance plan, we weren't able to do it at the fifteen-year mark.
Yeah.
And we are working to address that, as Kevin said, we're improving our CIP plan. But so there is a credit that is happening here for the free overlay. And if we were to do an overlay, you're gonna have a problem, we're not gonna get, so we want to be good stewards of your dollars, of your time and energy, and of this city's tax dollars. And so the significant portion of this project is gonna make a better road for those that live on it. And so credit for the free overlay and then a not-to-exceed value for what it costs to get this better road. Because of the modeled soils, it's necessary to not just do an overlay. Yeah, it, it would be kind of like, you know, if you have a bad roof, you, you can, you can fix spots on it, but if you recognize that it's time to replace the roof, it's most beneficial to the homeowner and most beneficial to the project to replace the roof at the time rather than just a spot change.
And again, the, the process over in Corcoran Trail was exactly what you're talking about, this is the first meeting of a number and such. It would be essentially the same style road, no curb gutter, just put a correct base down and pave it and then finish up the ditches and replar calverts and everything that happened over in Corcoran Trails and such.
Yeah, a little less stormwater in this project, Corcoran Trail had some flooding.
There is, there is, it was a whole different.
Drainage improvements are, you know, we're recommending they stay in the roadway bed, because it's, we entered this as a street project, not a drainage project. We're doing everything we can within the confines of the right of way, you know, the residents provided some feedback there, and so we're focusing on the things we can do with the road.
And opportunities for resident feedback, like this is to, to set the not-to-exceed amount for the assessments. And then there's other conversations, other considerations that, that could change that amount, it can only go down, it can't go up from this point. But this makes sure that the project that needs to happen gets approved, and then now it's a matter of figuring out how do we deliver on the project.
And I forgot your second question, if you still have it, I think I focused on the first, but there was a second question, or are you satisfied?
Uh, how old is the road and why the delay on the overlay were my two questions, so you, you nailed it. We're, we're growing up and we're doing what we were supposed to be doing a while back and, again, the, the confusion, all of these things, everybody's, I'll say it, air is on fire because they're out marking it and somebody said that they're replacing the road and we did not initiate that, so.
We'll, we'll issue a message that says the road proven has not moved forward and, you know, we'll find out what happened and provide an explanation.
Thank you.
So I apologize for that. But yeah, the project has not officially moved forward, we're probably, if the project were to move forward, it would be like after Labor Day, because of the timeline we have, we probably have thirty days of design. We have to go up for bid thirty days, then we have to come back, have, you know, we'll probably tie the bid award to the assessment hearing, because of the assessments are a lot lower than the value of the project. So we would recommend that you, that decision go hand in hand before you move forward with the project, and then we have to do contracts. So this project, you know, probably would take two weeks once they start, but it's a September, early October project if everything moves on the path, so.
This is the beginning of the process.
We can provide that update to everyone here, we, we had a great turnout at the meeting in January. It, it's kind of awkward, because you gear up everybody and there's this big gap as we go through the four-twenty-nine process. We've tried, we've, we've tried to have open-ended communication, appreciate everyone's feedback, like, like I said before, if you guys see something that's weird, let us know. We can, we can disseminate that information, and that, that would be abnormal, that'd be, you know, marking the whole neighborhood, so we have to follow up to see what happens, so.
And then to the one, gentleman on the end there, his comments and such, it was a team meeting, we're still hold the team meetings for stuff like this?
It was a public meeting, there was a couple people, we had both, we did join for flexibility.
So they were still able to do online?
There was a significant amount of people in that room, it was full, and there was some people calling in and some people on Teams.
Cool, we, we're still using it, still a useful tool, so outstanding. Thank you guys for saying something, appreciate it.
Council's opinion on if we do proceed here, what the numbers that I think has been generally our historical precedent and is the staff recommendation of the ten-year option and the four point four one percent interest rate? Any issues?
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay.
And just to be clear, that, that was based up, the, the three point four one was off of the twenty twenty-five A-bond that was a couple months ago, so that's the most recent.
So for the audience's understanding, we just did really well in terms of improving our stature with our financial operations, so we got a significantly lower rate. Market rate at the time was about six point seven, and because we're doing well, we got three point four one. And so the policy is that it's only one percent over what we get on a bond. And so, like, I just want to say, because we're doing good, it's beneficial, the interest rates can be better.
And I should note that the property owners would have, if it moved forward, they would have the ability to pay it off without the ten years. Those are just the two options, prepaid, prepaid, the assessment in full or spread it out over ten years at that, you know, proposed rate. And again, that gets adopted at the, at the assessment hearing, not tonight, we're just capping those and setting expectations for the next conversation.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? I'll entertain a motion, Jeremy was thinking.
I was just gonna say, one of my least favorite days as a homeowner was the day Maple Grove sent me a note they were gonna redo my road, so I. It's never a good time to have to shell out money for a capital improvement project. And I, I take it very seriously, we don't want to do more than is necessary, we don't want to have people spend more than is necessary. If you look at the overall breakdown, it looks like it's a pretty good deal in terms of how much the city is bearing, and we'll, we'll do our best to make sure it's as low as it can be for you.
Okay, and with that, I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-five-forty, ordering the Chisholm Trail Improvement Project as presented and authorize staff to proceed with plans and specifications.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And with that, see if we had new business in closed session on there, but I don't believe that those were auto-populated again, maybe? Perfect. Easy enough to cross off, any staff reports?
Other than Chief Godchalk will be serving as acting city administrator in my absence, beginning the twenty-second of May. And our public works director and our assistant city administrator will also be out, so in that window of time, just ask for your grace, we'll be operating within staff. And I will be swimming with the fishes in the Bahamas, I'm super stoked about it, taking care of our veterans and first responders on a, on a voyage of healing and health, so.
How long you been doing that, Jay, again?
I've been doing it for six years, so for, for your understanding, I'm, I'm on a, on a part of an organization called DVC Valkyries. We take disabled veterans and first responders on scuba trips as an alternative therapy to help them navigate PTSD. And so I will be out to sea with fifteen veterans and first responders for a little over a week, diving three to four times a day, and then we teach them how to navigate the challenges of post-traumatic stress disorder and the impact of moral injury. And I'm happy to say the reason this started, we started ten years ago, was to try and combat suicide amongst first responders and veterans. And of our participants, over the last ten years, we've been successful in, in preventing any of them from moving forward with that. And in contrast, seen a lot of thriving, moving away from substance abuse, moving away from self-harm, and I've done two weddings for guys that have recovered from those, so. I'm super stoked.
One recently, right? Was that the one?
I did, I did one in March down in Florida, a positive story about that one, it was somebody who has attempted suicide twice previously, was recovering from addiction, and they was a participant about four years ago, turned their life around and is just living, living a different life, so. It's the best thing I get to do, no disrespect to our community, but if I could do that full-time, I would do that full-time. But I can't do it full-time, because I love my wife, my wife doesn't want me to be at sea for all that time, she gives me permission to go down there and do it.
If you haven't seen the pictures in Jay's office, to the public or to council, I've set up a meeting with Jay and I'm sure he'd be happy to show you, they're pretty cool.
And I'm wearing my happy scuba diving tie tonight, as I'm thinking about going out.
Very cool.
Appreciate it, Jay, thank you for doing that.
Have a great trip.
Thanks.
All righty, council reports, I just had one brief thing that I believe is added to the agenda here. Alrighty, uh council reports, I just had one brief thing, and I believe it's added to the agenda here on basically just wanting to get approval from council uh for me and Jay to author a letter to send into the legislature slash governor. Um there's a lot kinda in there of the attachments um from the letter we got from the county and the co- meeting we had with Commissioner Anderson and and someone from his staff, basically boils down to asking the legislature and governor, whether, as they're in the middle of the complex budget negotiations, which are extra complex this year, to not try to shift any um service costs that the state has been funding to local property tax owners as a general, I uh general kind of restrictive rule, uh or that's what we're asking for, and a number of cities have been asking for. Uh and we'd be sending that in shortly, because there's about two weeks left in the session if they end on time. Um and it's, it, the more you dive into it, it can get a little political, but I think the baseline item of, hey, don't pass this off to local property tax owners can be kinda universal, and that's, that's kind of the ang- the angle we would take in the letter, I believe.
This true?
I attended the session on Saturday that he hosted, and it looked like first year impact and the worst case scenario was like a hundred dollars to the typical Corcoran household and property tax, but it escalates year on year, so by year four or five, it would be an extra four to five hundred dollars and.
And I believe that's just for the health and human services part of their budget now, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd rather you and Jay write the word letter than me, so I would, I would appreciate your.
Can I, can I uh?
I would make that motion.
I'll second that.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And with that, we have our city council's schedule in the.
If I could add one thing, I had the privilege to be emcee for the Lions at Hope Church
Yes.
on Tuesday for eighteen of our young adults graduating from high school. And uh while it is a nervous thing of mine of speaking in front of people, especially something like that, I think I did okay. Jay was there, he can contest, but uh.
Thank you for doing that, and thank you for going out.
It was uh, our volunteers in the Lions are unbelievable. Um my public service announcement to anybody listening and anybody here, the Lions need more volunteers. Um oh, a a big thing that came out of it, and and I I looked at all eighteen applications and such that were approved and and such, and the biggest thing that sticks off to me is our future is very, very bright. Um they all had to submit three years of transcripts for their education and what they've done the last three years. And out of all those three years, out of eighteen kids, young adults, there was only one C. Out of all of those transcripts, the rest were, I think I calculated out, seventy-eight percent were As and twenty-three percent, twenty-two percent, if I can do the math in my head, were Bs, but otherwise, just one C. And these kids are going from um growing their faith in 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 the religion side of things to doctors, nurses, engineers, um one person firearm and gunsmith training, two-year type deal to be that resource and such, so I'm extremely proud of those young adults living in Corcoran and such. I'm, I'm honored to be asked to do that for the Lions. Some great parents there, um siblings and such, so let y'all know, we need volunteers. Thanks very much.
If I could piggyback off that for just a second, Mr. Mayor, so in terms of the Lions' impact on the community, one of the things I want everybody who's watching to understand is uh one outstanding data point, uh about eleven hundred scholarship recipients since nineteen eighty-nine in the community, totaling over six hundred and sixty thousand dollars uh just for Corcoran kids. Every kid in Corcoran that applies gets something, so that that's remarkable. I I I'm, I was a Lion in in Shakopee, uh we had one scholarship recipient. And to see that every Corcoran kid who applies gets a scholarship and the dollar amount since nineteen eighty-nine, or you know, six hundred sixty, that's incredible. And that's just a testament to the Lions' work that they're doing to take care of the community, uh but also to council member Baring Camp's point, they need action figures to help them, uh because there's, there's some folks that, just where they're at in the stage of life and with their health, they can't continue to do this heavy lifting. And also to put it.
They have nine events this year, if you're, got your calendars out, May thirty-first is the first tractor pull this year, June fifteenth, I think, is the Hennepin County Fair. Um July eleventh through the thirteenth is the Hamel Rodeo, anybody, nobody's writing this down, come on, guys.
Fill me, fill me some signs up.
August, August uh eleventh and twelfth, I think, is Country Days. I'm just about done, and then uh another tractor pull shortly after that. And then it finishes off with the demolition derby in the beginning of September, so. If you can't volunteer, please go and spend a few dollars for a ticket, and I know there's beverages and other good food there, so. How's that for my public service announcement for this evening?
I just wanted to add, thank you for for going and doing that, and Jay, thank you for attending. I was supposed to go and had a unfortunate family emergency, so I wasn't able to make it, but I wanted to apologize to the Lions for for short notice having to cancel on them, and hopefully I can make it there next year, but.
And then another volunteer for our community is, the Hope Church is where it happened, for them to open their doors and share, share their church for those kind of events and such, but we 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 live in a really cool, really cool city, so. Thank you, guys.
So I know I'm not supposed to talk.
I'll let you.
But thank you for the the newsletter, it has a lot of good useful information in it, I look forward to getting it every, every month, and and you know, it's got all your events in there.
Do all you guys read it?
Yeah.
Not everybody reads it, they throw it away, and then call and ask what's going on.
It could be, it could be online if you wanna save some money.
They are online.
It is.
Okay.
We make it very much available, so.
As, yeah, as available to everyone as possible, but.
All of it is, all of it is up to date as much as possible, there are some things that have already happened, but the timing and such, but thank you for that input, and staff, I'm sure appreciates that very, very much, so, cool.
And we just have our city council's schedule in there?
Uh only addition, Mr. Mayor, uh we added July twenty-fourth work session after the last work session, so that's the only change to the schedule.
Okay, and with that.
Good question, sorry, can we change it to five thirty P M?
I would suggest that based on today's discussion, I'm concerned that we're gonna get done in time for the council meeting, because we, we were really tight. Uh so I'll, but I'll take direction from council.
Were you late too?
Just about, and I didn't get to eat dinner.
I was late, I didn't.
So what, we 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 could add dinner to the agenda if that's helpful.
Like, that would be a good idea.
That would be helpful.
So we we can do that to make sure that you have brain food.
You don't wanna see me when I'm angry.
Because, yeah, we might do that full time.
I mean, angry.
You don't wanna see me when I'm angry, I I like to hangry do.
And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I'll make the motion, Michelle will second it. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.